Here.
Councilwoman Luton.
Here.
Councilman Horden.
Here.
May I have a quorum? Okay, having a quorum that will stand for the prayer and the pledge. I'll lead the prayer. Everyone, if you'll follow me with the Lord's Prayer, me, in the name of the Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen. And for the pledge, I see Officer Gonzalez standing in the corner. Would you mind leading us in the pledge?
Yes.
To the United States of America, to the great public of the citizens, one nation, and for God in the best of all, the Lord. Before we take, uh, before we support, I'm gonna do some general housekeeping like we do every meeting. Um, the mics are on, council, don't forget that. I'm the one that needs to remember it. Um, our meetings are live stream. The camera is right up here. I also have the media here. I am gonna ask, if you want to speak, you come to the front, you state your name for the record. You might have to come this way. Um, you may or may not be on camera, but everything you say will be on camera. These cameras are sensitive and pick up comments all the way from the back row, so I'm gonna ask you to keep the chatter down. I will call the meeting to order if it gets out of hand. Um, we like to limit items, uh, comments on items to three minutes and any presentations to seven minutes or less, just to keep the meeting rolling. I know that we have some topics that some of you are here to talk on. I will allow each of you to speak if you want to. Keep it to two minutes. There's not gonna be back and forth. We'll let you state your stuff. The council can state, the audience can state, and then we'll take any action. So, uh, that being said, I think that's all the rules. After your item of business is taken care of, you can leave. Just do so quietly. You are welcome to state also, though. Um, that being said, we're gonna move on to public comments. Before we start on the agenda, are there any public comments that anyone would like to say about an agenda item? If not, you can say it during the agenda item. Any public comments right now? Hearing none, we'll move on to person classified, the pay ranges of the tax and permit specialist, wastewater plant operator foreman, water production superintendent, wastewater superintendent, and water plant maintenance worker three. And it's neglected to add here secretary treasurer. And council, I'm gonna explain this to you first. It's, it's reclassification. So, uh, if you recall, a few meetings ago, we took the foremans and we moved them up to a class seventeen, right? In certain departments, because a foreman is very hard position to fill. There are some superintendents that work underneath those foremans that are class sixteen, seventeen. So it is my recommendation to take those superintendents, which if you look, I don't wanna, I don't wanna state a lot of names on the record. So I'm just gonna take them one by one. Tax and permit specialist is the assistant that works in the tax and permit department. So they work with our director of tax and permit. Operator foreman, this is the person who's the operator foreman underneath the water plant, um, underneath the water plant superintendent. Water production superintendent, that is the superintendent who runs our waste. That's the superintendent that runs our water plant. Wastewater treatment superintendent, that is the superintendent who runs the sewer plant. Um, and water plant maintenance worker three, let me see, I don't remember where that one is now. It's actually not supposed to say, it's, it's not supposed to say water.
Right.
It's just, uh, maintenance worker number, work, maintenance worker three.
I'll move to approve.
And secretary treasurer.
Definitely.
And I'll tell you what, those are gonna be motion in a second. My recommendation is to take tax and permit specialist from a range eight to a range thirteen. That puts that person in level with the assistant that works under the clerk. Assistant that works in all other departments, public works. Uh, this is an assistant who we didn't move to the same level as others. So it's adjustment to put her in line with other people to do the same job in different departments. So we would reclassify that tax and permit specialist from an eight to a thirteen and move her to two percent below mid-range salary with that.
Yeah.
Wastewater plant operator foreman. So this is the operator foreman under the water, under the sewer plant superintendent. We would move that from a range ten to a range seventeen and put him at mid-range pay. That's what I'm recommending, so I wanna make sure your motion stands when we get.
Yes.
Water, yes.
I'm not taking money from you.
No, we're, we're actually reclassifying, this is my, this is my goal. As we all know, no one in the city government is overpaid, right? Um, we would love to pay our employees better, but as you all saw previously, until we can do something about healthcare costs, we don't have the money to do that. What we need to do first is fix all the classifications according to certain, like, the new, the job descriptions, what we're requiring departments to do now is different than the job descriptions that were written in two thousand and nine, two thousand and fourteen. So me and the new HR director are taking each, each group and looking at them, reclassifying them according to the work they do now, making that recommendation of civil service. These right here that we're talking about are actually promotions and classifications from a lower classification to higher, which comes with a salary increase according to that range. The goal would be, after we get through insurance, at some point, once we have all the classifications right, look at what we can do to do better salaries. But we need to get the classifications right before we do that. So this is wastewater plant operator foreman, the, the person who works under our superintendent at the wastewater plant. They have been working shorthanded for a year and a half, two guys running that plant. And it usually takes three or four, Lee, how many does it take in your, to run the plant normally?
Three or four.
And we've been running with two for two years. So Lee and the water plant operator foreman have been running the plant by themselves. Um, and so my recommendation is to reclassify, reclassify that foreman operator from a range ten to a range seventeen. And these operators have to get certifications, right? And that's why, because they, they're going above and beyond to get these certifications that are required to operate these plants. So it's not something that anybody can step into. They step into it and they have to go take these tests. So range ten to a range seventeen at mid-range pay for that. Water production superintendent, that is the lady that runs our water plant. I'm not gonna name her, but everybody knows her. Range seventeen to a range twenty. So I'm basically saying all superintendents that run departments should range twenty. If it, if it requires special classifications or special, um, uh, education or, or expertise, right? So the range twenty at mid-range pay. Um, wastewater treatment superintendent, so that's the person who runs our sewer plant from a range seventeen to a range twenty at mid-range pay. And then the maintenance worker three position, uh, from a range nine to a range seventeen. The reason this person, uh, works and, and works across multiple departments and runs crews for us and works independently. And, um, and we believe that he needs to be classified kind of more in line with what our foremans are. So, and then the, um, the clerk secretary, um, I believe we should reclassify to a range twenty also because they do, that our clerk secretary runs City Hall alongside me. And I've added extra duties where she works on the budget with us. Um, and so I believe that she should be in line with other, other, uh, people who run departments. And so that's my recommendation. Does your motion stand?
I reiterate my motion to approve.
And a second. Do we have any questions or comments?
I got one.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
All right, Lieutenant Scott, with that, please.
Yep.
If you cannot afford to give us higher pay, how can you justify giving these other employees higher pay?
We're reclassifying these people to be in line with the.
Where's the money come from?
This money is coming from the, well, the utilities is coming from the utility department, which we didn't go over in this budget, right? The only money that's coming out of the general fund is, actually would be just the, the, uh, maintenance worker three, the clerk and the tax and permit. And we're talking about two dollars, one dollar an hour times twenty, eighty, um, over the course of a year. So that's all the money that's coming. We're gonna get to yours when we get to police pay. So you'll, you'll, your comment's on the record, though. Okay, go ahead.
So we're talking about one dollar.
Well, that's very different. I mean, I wasn't gonna go through each one. That's okay. I don't wanna see that. Right. All right, so that's comment on the record you got then. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that's done. Approve the minutes. Item number one, to approve the minutes from October one, twenty twenty-four and October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, regular city council meetings.
I move second.
Motion is second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. New business, item one, number one, discussion and possible action to adopt pay schedule for the Abidale Police Department. All right, council, before you take a motion, um, let me just, I guess, open the discussion, right? So, as you know, a little bit of history, um, there was a sales tax passed in twenty eighteen. Uh, at the time, we passed the sales tax and we gave an across-the-board raise to every employee in government. And that pay raise was around six thousand and five hundred dollars of all departments. Um, that pay raise later on in twenty twenty-two, the chief came to us when we got ready to do the budget and he asked the council to raise starting pay by ten thousand dollars annually for starting officers to be able to recruit. The council, we looked at everything. We actually gave a thirteen thousand, four hundred dollar raise to every person in APD from the maintenance worker all the way up to the lieutenants. Everybody got thirteen thousand, four hundred. No other department got that raise. It only went to APD. So that is a total of nineteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars in raises in three years for APD. Not saying that they have been way underpaid for a very long time. Starting pay in twenty eighteen, before we gave those raises, was just that twenty thousand and change for an officer, right? For a new hire officer. Is that right, chief? You weren't, you weren't chief, but I know it was, I, I had the, I have the number in front of me. Um, when we gave the raise, I think it brings, brought up starting pay to twenty seven thousand for new officers, right? In twenty, oh, that was effective twenty twenty. So in twenty twenty, new hires were making twenty seven thousand.
Twenty six or something, yeah.
Yeah. And then in twenty twenty-two, we implemented the additional thirteen thousand, four hundred dollars in raises. So in two, we made that effective January eleventh, the first payroll, actually we gave holiday pay too at the higher rate, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, which brought starting pay to forty thousand dollars. And everybody in the department got that extra thirteen thousand, four hundred. Whenever we started doing payroll, as we went through the year, there was some internal hiring practices that had been happening for many years um, that included, uh, some raises that were never considered or adopted by this council. And it is the council's job to set pay. I don't know if y'all remember this, but recently, in the last year, we've taken action to, to cease all pay raises until such time as the chief and I could come up with a, a more palatable and agree on the salaries and what they should be and what the increases should be. The chief and I have not been able to come up to, to a compromise. Um, but I do need this council to take action to set pay moving forward. This is moving forward for any raises, any promotions that happen for that department. And then once we have that done, we can look at retroactively, right? Um, I'm going to allow discussion. We, there is open litigation about this situation because we are being sued over those raises. So there are some things, I'm gonna let Bort comment if he thinks we should not answer because of the open lawsuit. Um, and so we're gonna go from there. The, the council has in front of them two recommendations that I made to Chief Horry. Um, one was to keep starting pay at forty thousand and do a ten percent increase above the range. The reason we use that number is because that's exactly what we do with every other department. So when somebody gets promoted from one position to another in municipal, you get a ten percent increase. Um, so that's where we used that factor in. Um, I know the chief alluded to the state law that has, where specifically for Abidale Police, a fifteen percent above starting pay for, if you're, if you're a starting officer to a police officer first class, twenty-five percent to uh, the sergeant and thirty percent, uh, fifty percent above starting pay for a lieutenant. And as I've told chief multiple times, that is specifically for municipalities of twelve thousand to two hundred fifty thousand. Doesn't, you're not an attorney, I'm just speaking on the record.
We can read the law.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can't. So, so.
That's disrespectful.
Right now, we are a smaller, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call it to order, y'all. Okay, so right now, we are a smaller municipal. So it is this council's job to set pay. And we'll let the, we'll let the city attorney talk to law, okay? So you're gonna set the pay moving forward. There is an open lawsuit. When that lawsuit is resolved, if we have to go back and change things, it will be changed then. But it's our job to set what we're doing going forward, because payroll is a nightmare every time it comes in for, for the city, right? It's not fair to the people that do payroll. It's not fair to, to the police clerk payroll, because she's doing what the chief's saying, and then I'm telling her she can't do it. So this council needs to set pay moving forward and we'll deal with the aftermath after that, right? Or do you wanna say anything before I open the floor for comments?
No, I'll address any concerns I have.
Okay.
You know, I have to take.
We're gonna do this one, one time. Everybody raise your hand. You'll be allowed to speak on record. You're gonna state your name, speak to the council on record, no back and forth. Um, when it's finished, the, the, the public will be able to comment too. Um, when it's finished, at some point, we will take action. And I'll go into these classifications and the, I know we didn't even talk about the money yet, but I'll let them go ahead and start commenting. So who wants to comment first?
I would, Mayor.
Okay, go ahead, chief. Uh, chief. Councilman Horden.
I, I, my honest opinion, I think we ought to put this on hold till after the litigation is over.
I don't, we cannot, chief.
Chief, over.
Counsel. Okay. Well, you don't, you, you actually can't vote, so you have to recuse yourself, but.
Yes, I'm, I'm just stating.
Okay.
Uh, honestly, I know.
I think, uh, my honest opinion, um, and I, I need to be mindful that each officer in here, I appreciate every damn thing you do when you put that uniform on. However, I've always been told that you don't bite the hand that feeds you. And as a city council woman, when I got here, officers, they were not being paid. We gave those raises and some of you turned around, right around, and you bit us and bit me, me, I'm part of this council. And I tell you, that hurt like hell. That, that, that hurt like hell to know. But know that every day you put that uniform on, I do appreciate, and I know because I ride my district, your job is not easy. I know that. But it hurts. It hurts to know that instead of coming to a common ground and, and, and trying to just work things out with the mayor and council, a lawsuit, uh, you guys went on and decided that you were going to sue the city. And, and we had your back. We were doing the best we can working with numbers and money. And this is what we gotta return. That's all I have to say.
Okay, uh, I'm out. Call on Officer Sergeant DeVille first. Stand up and state your name for the record and then you can speak. Yep, we got to go one at a time.
All right, Sergeant DeVille, Department of Police Department. I've been a sergeant for about two and a half years. Um, we do appreciate the raise that you guys gave us, okay? Well, we have been understaffed for almost three years now, understaffed. We actually took, when we took that pay raise, we actually took a number decrease in officers for our agency. We went from thirty-seven to thirty-two officers, thirty-nine to thirty-two officers. And if you think that it's okay that a starting officer gets forty thousand dollars and that a senior sergeant, because after one year of an officer being in the department, they go to forty-five thousand. Okay, they get fifty-four percent.
That's interesting.
Forty-six.
If they.
So, so we have, we have, we have sergeants right now, senior sergeants that's in the department that are getting paid the same amount of money as an officer that's only been there one year. You tell me how that's fair. You tell me how you would feel appreciated by that. Cause it's not, it's not right. If you have a, a one-year officer getting paid the same as a sergeant. So we are taking a six, seven thousand dollar pay cut. You guys decided to give it the forty thousand, which is great. But you need to understand that at some point, when you make rank sergeant or lieutenant, it comes with an increase, just like you talked about, people in the sewage plant should be increased a higher pay.
Yep.
Because they're older people. It's the same thing as a sergeant. That's anywhere. That's any department you go to, Lafayette, Carroll Grove, anywhere. Any police department you go to, they have a difference in rating. A sergeant gets paid different than a first-year police officer. A lieutenant gets paid more than a sergeant. So that, that's, that's where it comes into play as far as how we are feeling. Cause right now, you guys, since it started, I'm over ten thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars, that we have taken a loss for.
You haven't taken a loss. You got a raise.
Well, y'all haven't given to it. What we, what our pay is, you haven't given it to us.
Well, you feel your pay should be.
It should be. It's right. And the public would tell you too, that it's right. That a first, first-time officer, for one-year officer, should not be getting paid the same as a sergeant.
Let me, let me, let me tell you why I agree with that. Because a one-year officer shouldn't make a fifteen percent bump in pay.
That's what the law is.
No, that's not what the law is right now.
That's what the law states.
That's what, um, we're not gonna get into the semantics of the law.
We're not gonna.
You just stated all that, but the law, the judge is.
That's fine. That's fine.
So, so, so what I presented to the chief, what my recommendation was, was instead of giving the fifteen percent in one year, because that fifteen percent, uh, the history of that law, I was not here, right? But when you're making twenty thousand dollars as a starting officer and you make, and you make one year, okay? Of course we need to bump it up fifteen percent, right? Plus the state supplemental, plus at the time we're giving two percent, right? That's to get you from twenty thousand dollars to not even a livable wage, right? What, what didn't happen is when the forty thousand dollars went into pay, into play, fifteen percent in one year plus two percent, that brings them up to what, forty-six thousand?
Forty-six thousand.
That, the recommendation I made to chief is that it should be ten percent at that point, right? A new officer comes in, they have forty thousand, they go complete economy, they get a ten percent raise, right? Right? And then whenever you give sergeant another ten percent. Right now, with, with the pay raise, like what you're talking about, fifteen percent increase. And then when you become eight point seven percent increase, right?
When you, the sergeant was getting twenty-five percent.
No, no.
Oh, well, yeah, well, okay.
But if you take what is twenty-five percent above a starting officer from the, from the police officer first class to a sergeant, it's only an eight point seven percent increase. So the, the argument is that the first-year officer is making fifteen percent, right?
Right.
And whenever you move to sergeant, you're only getting eighty point seven percent. Whereas if the first-year officer gets ten percent, and when you move to sergeant, you get another ten percent, then your, your pay between the, the rank under you is higher than what it is right now. And so that was the recommendation I made.
And I understand that completely, what you're saying.
Right.
What I'm saying is the point where we're at right now, as far as what you wanna do as a starting officer, we're at, where we're at right now, there's officers that got that fifteen percent. There's also beginning sergeants that you allow, that you pay their, their twenty-five percent. So there, we have beginning sergeants in our department right now
Mm-hmm.
that are getting paid higher than senior sergeants.
Yeah.
We have beginning sergeants that are at fifty-some thousand.
And that mess is why we fixing pay right now, right?
It's not fixed, though.
So, let me, let me say this. What we, and, well, and I said no back and forth, so I'm gonna stop.
That's fine.
But what we're doing right now is setting pay moving forward. There is a lawsuit, right?
Correct.
And all of those officers that are named in that lawsuit, how we're gonna handle retroactively is gonna have to be completely handled differently, right? Because it's long-standing litigation. There's not a whole lot I can do about that, right? I need to set a rule right now, so we don't have this back and forth going forward. And if a court comes in and orders that we have to give the old ranks, then we're gonna have to fix everything again. But we have to take action right now because I cannot continue to operate the city with what's going on in payroll with the police department.
You guys do know that we are understaffed, right?
I do know. I also know that that was the same argument made in twenty twenty-two. And we have twenty-four officers. You have twen, I know how many, we don't wanna. You have twenty, you have twenty-five on the road, right? Twenty-five on the road, the chief just said. You have twenty-nine as of the last payroll, total officers in there. From the time we gave that pay raise, we got to thirty-one officers for two payrolls, and we've never gotten above thirty-one. If we get to thirty-two, I, I have no problem making a recommendation to council to add more positions. We've never gotten to thirty-two since we gave the pay rates, right? So the pay raise has not netted additional staff.
Mayor, I'm not gonna back, go with you. I'm just gonna say, which from officers starting, coming in.
Right.
On is as far as where we at right now, how I feel. She, she, we made a council, Terry, Terry Bruce, or said how we bit the hand that, that, that's not it. That's not at all. We just feel like we are owed money, because it's not right, it's not right that a new sergeant should be getting paid more than a senior sergeant. If you think that's right, then tell me, please, but it's not.
Councilman Horden, how many years did it take you to become a sergeant in the police department?
Ten.
And how many years did it take you to become a lieutenant?
Fifteen.
Officer DeVille, Sergeant DeVille, how many years did it take you to become a sergeant?
I've been, been in law enforcement ten years.
When did you start and APD and when did you become a sergeant?
Five years.
Five years from the time you started to the time you became a sergeant?
Correct.
Is Timothy Bork in here?
Right here.
Yeah. Okay, well, there you are. How many years were you at APD from a starting officer to a sergeant?
Respectfully, I'm not sitting in here as a police officer.
You are detective.
I'm not even sitting in here as a detective. I'm sitting.
Army in twenty eighteen and you became a sergeant.
I'm sitting here as the president of FOP, representing officers.
I've been in law enforcement ten years, okay? And the reason why I got to sergeant the way I did was because we couldn't keep nobody in the police department.
I, I understand that, but.
I've just been here. I've stuck it out.
When you were there as long as, as this man right here.
He's been here.
Two percent, when, you earned two percent in longevity pay. So when you got your increase in rank, you were above that fifty, forty-six thousand, right? What happened is we had officers come in, we had a lot of lieutenants and sergeants, so we had a lot of promotions really fast without them earning the longevity of being there, right? And so that is why it's not at the forty-six thousand or the. Yes, sir. Hold on one second. Let, let him finish, then I'll give you the.
All I'm saying, all I'm saying, Mayor, is that I don't feel it's right that a, a sergeant that is starting should be at her, at, at fifty thousand.
Yeah.
And a senior sergeant should be making this. That's all I'm saying.
State it for the record. It's on record. Thank you, Officer Sergeant DeVille.
Just go back to what you.
Stand up, say your name for the record, please, and then you can say everything you wanna say on the record.
Lieutenant Scott, that's a good one. But going back, if you was talking about when Tony made sergeant versus when he made lieutenant.
Right.
You made sergeant, what percentage did you get in pay? Oh, your step increase. You made lieutenant, what pay?
That was twenty-five percent of the starting pay.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
And you made lieutenant, what was your rank that you gained, your percentage you gained?
Fifty percent.
Fifty percent of it was fifty percent. So why is the council now trying to do away with the law that was written in the Louisiana state law for Abidale Police Department? I have to mention the budget when Chief, uh, Mike took office.
Mm-hmm.
He dropped thirty-nine position to thirty-two to accommodate the pay increases for his pay salary for his officers that stayed and he maintained for the thirty-two. Our pay increases came under this man's budget, fell within his budget for our pay. And you denied the pay in his budget, what we were owed, that fell within his pay salary on that budget.
This is why, because it was clearly stated to the chief from the time he came for raises, that the pot of money that it was gonna come from could only be administered across the board. That's the only way it could be administered.
Right, but you brought it up. You brought, called me into it on what he made and his step increases he was paying.
That's, that's fine.
So why are you doing away with it now? That's all I'm asking. Why are you?
Because the only, because the only pot of money can only be administered across the board, right? And so from the beginning.
That's the point I'm asking.
Okay, go ahead. Why? Because everyone in the department has gotten.
I think what he's asking is why we're not applying in thirty-two as well.
Yeah.
Which is the whole premise for the, the litigation.
Right.
So, I mean, we can't, we can't come on that, you know?
And you said it's not, it's not written law because for what, where twelve thousand?
If you read the full statute.
But what does it say in there? Read, read it to me, sir, where it says it does not.
I'm not gonna do that right now, but.
I hope you're not. Thank you. That's all I have.
I'd be happy to move if you have to leave.
Oh, you're not. I got you. It's okay. Go ahead some more.
It says notwithstanding.
Yeah, I can show you in Spanish.
That's another thing with our police officers, uh, the disrespect and the attitudes. Um, and, and in, in public right here tonight, it shows that when, and proves that when someone calls or have a complaint about an officer being.
Hey, I'm gonna ask y'all to keep it down or I ask y'all to step out.
An officer being rude or obnoxious, just from what I'm seeing tonight, that's almost obvious that you can believe the, the citizen on the phone that that actually happened because this is what's being displayed tonight. The mayor was speaking and she was disrespected. I, I mean.
But you can't answer my question on why they pay.
I can't answer your question because there's a lawsuit pending on your question.
Yeah, my, my, my thing is, all this is being recorded, and I'm sure somebody's gonna have a transcript of what's being said tonight. So that's gonna maybe prejudice the, the court proceeding, so I think we should have to answer all these. So that's gonna maybe prejudice the, the court proceeding, so I think we should have to answer all these questions.
But, but we will put it on record. Okay, yes.
Yeah, that important. So with these officers and their money, when we make a phone call to the police department, is that affect for when we call y'all, y'all don't come quick enough? Or we gotta constantly call, or somebody don't even show up? Is that the reason why the department is like that?
There was, I mean, there's no back and forth, so I'm not gonna, yeah, thank you for your statement, but yeah, okay.
Same question.
Okay.
I can answer that.
No, this is not a, the, the, other meaning is not supposed to be a, a back and forth, so see, allow people to comment on record, allow a comment, and not, people talk multiple times. Yes, ma'am, please stand and state your name for the record.
I just wanna ask a question. Um, my name is, I'm named Duma Shay. I wanna know, uh, so am I understanding right the Abbeville Police Department is suing the city council?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna let the city attorney answer that, please.
My understanding, right?
Without getting specifics about the litigation, answering your question, yes. There's a lawsuit by the city, the police department, officers against the city.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Yes. Stand and state your name for the record.
My name is Timothy Bork. Uh, I am the president of FOP. For anybody that doesn't know what FOP is in our region, it's a term of order police. Uh, my job is just to represent the officers that are, who are members in the state essentially a union. I'm not gonna ask any questions or make any statements and expect any back and forth, uh, trying to respect anybody, but it's just my opinion, as well as others that share, you know, every, with everything that goes on in this world and everything that goes on, at the end of the day, right now, this is about an opinion, a matter of opinion. Now, we do, everything in this world is expensive. We spend an arm and a leg to do everything we can to do our jobs. It's understandable. And it's completely understandable about making budgets, sorry, this and that, it's business, it's, the city is a business, the police department's a business. You know, it's just how it is. However, talking about the ten percent, changing four percent and whatnot, the whole litigation, without talking about the litigation too much, is about, based on opinion, and the understanding of the law is between the lawyer, not even ours, or any member of the council or anything like that, the opinion of the law, of the full literature of it, based upon the attorney's opinion and the judgments. So it's just my opinion that we should probably hold off a little bit before cha-, changing something now that might hurt the city in the long run. If we do something now and we change something now, as far as say, ten percent in this, and a judge turns around and says one way or the other, this is how it goes, well, then the city's gonna have to turn around and fork out more money to fix that later on. And it's just my opinion, I don't expect anybody to say anything else, but.
Uh, since you're the, uh, president of the FOP, why, why aren't you speaking on behalf of the department? Why does everybody else speak?
So I can't speak on behalf of an individual officer. When I can speak on behalf of members, there's a separation. So as a union, essentially, it's a separate entity. Kind of how the ci-, the city police department is kind of part of the, the city, the police department is part of the city, but it's, in a sense, also a separate entity. It's a separate business.
It actually, it absolutely is not. It's still part of the city. And that's what you don't understand. You're not suing the council, you're not suing the city, you're suing the people of Abbeville, because that's whose money it is.
Okay, so. Well, I'm, sorry, I don't share that, um, but I, I understand where you're coming from. But to answer your question, I can't speak on officers of the department. I can't speak on this man while he's in uniform, coming here, speaks the state's opinion, he has every right to speak his opinion. But he's coming here as a police officer. It's, I have to keep it separate. There's, there's a little bit of difference.
Well.
Good, that's enough.
I'll update it, I, I'll, I'll finish.
Other comments and, yes?
Brian Fisher, uh, I'm the code enforcement officer, but I'm not speaking on behalf of code enforcement. So, uh, to put it into perspective for some people, there is a huge dis-, uh, disparity in pay when you get outside of the government agencies with new hire personnel making almost the same amount as the supervisors in the business world. Sergeant Bork or Lieutenant Bork, uh, had made a, a statement about business. Difference between business and government is business, in order to offset those costs, can actually increase the amount of their products that they're selling, the goods and services they provide. Whereas the city, we have to go to the electors and hopefully get the pay increased through tax. So there, there is a, there is similarities, but there is a, a, a very big difference as to where the money mechanism comes from.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Other questions or comments from the audience?
I do have a comment.
Stand and state your name, please, ma'am.
Sergeant Emily Long, I do wanna make it known, um, if at any point you contact the police department and you're met with something that may be an ugly attitude or an officer not showing up like she stated, please, um, make it a point, you don't have to just accept that. Come in, speak with the shift supervisor, if you don't feel comfortable with that, come during business hours and try to make an appointment to speak with the chief and make a complaint on that officer or that shift.
That's after the fact. They can call right away.
I'm giving a solution to a pro-, a possible problem that was brought up.
Thank you.
And that's all, um, just a suggestion.
Okay, council, uh, no other questions or comments? All right, so right now I'm going, it's on the floor for you guys to make a motion on how we should move forward. Um, the two recommendations that I gave the chief last week and asked him to pick one, although he, he refused to, um, was one, starting salary of forty thousand and keeping, uh, and changing the between the ranks when they go from patrolman to patrolman first class, a ten percent increase, which would bring the pay from forty thousand to forty-four thousand, police officer first class, and he's, they've been doing that automatically in one year. Um, that's also when state supplemental would kick in a, at that time, and this number does not include state supplemental, right? So forty thousand starting pay, police officer first class would be, be at forty-four. When they were promoted to sergeant, another ten percent, which would go to forty-eight thousand, four hundred. And then when it goes to lieutenant, base, this is not including longevity, this is just base, fifty-three thousand, two forty. The longevity, uh, would be on top of that and state supplemental. So that's the first option that I presented chief with. The second option would be to, if he wants to keep fifteen, twenty-five, and fifty percent above starting pay, uh, when they get promoted, which is where that discrepancy comes in, that the, the sergeant doesn't make as much as he feels that he should between a police officer first class and sergeant. I recommend that we, we lower starting pay to thirty-six five. And then they would get the fifteen percent in one year, which would be forty-one, nine, seventy-five, base pay. No longevity on top, like longevity would be on top of that layer. And then the base pay for sergeant would be forty-five thousand, six, twenty-six, eighty-three. And the base pay for a lieutenant would be fifty-four thousand, seven, fifty-two, nineteen. And whatever longevity they have would be added to that number. And I suggested to the chief on his hiring sheet, instead of it being the way it was written before, this is actually fashioned after state police, that's what I did, I took what they did with state police, and I put the number of years of service, times the percentage of pay increase, the starting pay, base pay, when they get to their longevity is here. So if someone's been here this year and they get promoted, they know automatically what they're getting paid. Everybody has it, payroll would have it, APD payroll would have it, so there's no back and forth with payroll when it comes. Um, we pres-, I presented both of those to him, he, uh, could not choose out the two. So unfortunately, that, that, uh, is going to be your, you guys' choices, or whatever version of that you feel should happen. Um, but I am asking for you to make some kind of motion tonight to move forward.
Make a statement?
Yes, chief, you can comment.
And it's just a comment. This is all out of everyone having discrepancies on what they feel the police department's patient. When it all first started, and probably what brought the suit is when they found out what a police lieutenant would make after thirty years' experience, according to the forty thousand dollar base. And the base lieutenant would be sixty thousand, cause it's one point five times forty. Well, according to this right here, an officer that is getting approximately, well, I can tell you exactly, just a second. He's getting exactly about sixty-seven thousand a, a year. We're gonna bump him up to seventy-nine thousand, or eighty-one, depends on which one you're talking about. That's two officers that have twenty-two and twenty-three years. But we have one with thirty-three years, he's gonna be making about a hundred, five thousand dollars a year. We're giving people you said, or that I heard that the council said was making too much money, even more money, cause.
No one is saying that anyone is making too much money, chief.
Well, that's, that's what brought this about in the beginning, because it looked like there was too much money at the top, we were top heavy. The reason we're top heavy right now is because the officer that's, senior officer has been here thirty-three years. He hasn't been retiring in a year and a half. That knocks down a chunk out of this budget, a hun- he probably makes a hundred and ten thousand with overtime right now. Uh, I'm not sure this is gonna be the answer. And like everybody else, I think this should wait until this gets settled. Thank you.
Uh, chief, you said it knocks his budget down. Can you clarify what you mean? Uh, or his pension, is that what you?
No, it's gonna bump his salary up. These, my, my three senior guys right now will, will get a really nice pay increase if this passes tonight.
No, they will not, chief, because as I already said, this is for future promotions, not promotions that have already happened. I made that very clear from the very beginning when I, when you and I talked about.
Yes, but listen, mayor, if you put that you're gonna give this person that has twenty-four, well, say he's got twenty-two right now. He's got twenty-two and this year it doesn't affect him. Next year he gets twenty-three years as a lieutenant, he's entitled to eighty-one thousand.
No, chief, you cannot, you're not.
No, I, I really don't understand.
This is for future promotions. This is for a sergeant who, if a sergeant is in, okay, let's take a sergeant, for example. Which sergeant in your, what, I'll, will you do DeVille?
I can do it.
How many years have you been here?
Five years.
Five years, okay. So you've been here five years, right? And so if you were moved to lieutenant in the five years, and I'm using the ten percent, let me just use the ten percent to be, to be simple. In five years, you were at sergeant, if you moved to lieutenant, your base pay would be fifty-five thousand, three ninety, ninety, when you got that promotion, and your longevity on top of that, right?
Right.
That's, now, you're already sergeant, we're not adjusting current pay right now. But if you get a promotion, it would fall into this rank, right? So this is just for future promotions, so that when the chief has the name of temporary sergeant, we have a number that is where the base pay is, plus that longevity that we're moving forward, and we're not having to go redo payroll every time.
So we're still gonna have to redo payroll because our lieutenants will not be on this spectrum then? You understand what I'm saying?
Uh, do, chief, it's, this is every, every day.
It just.
So, so just to, the topic, just to answer your question, in twenty-twenty-three, I had Kathy pay, pull this, just so we can see, twenty-twenty-three, with the current pay raises we gave, the top lieutenant who's been there the longest, the regular pay was seventy-one thousand, nineteen fifty-two in twenty-twenty-three. With overtime, the gross pay was eighty-eight thousand, six fifty-five, ten. Chief, what do you make a year?
Eighty-five.
Yeah. And with state supplemental, that officer made ninety-five thousand, eight fifty-five, ten in twenty-twenty-three, a lieutenant, top, the one that's been there the longest, right? So keep in mind, it's not just the base pay, it's base pay plus longevity, plus overtime, plus supplemental, plus gross. That, that leads to gross. So that is the total pay that, that the highest lieutenant who's been there the longest made in twenty-twenty-three. I don't have the numbers for twenty-twenty-four, it's not finished. Um, so, council, again, I'm, I'm posing to, uh, chief, I'm sorry, are you finished, or you?
Yeah, I'll, I'll finish.
So this is for, moving forward, when the chief promotes someone to another rank, what are, what is the pay increase, right? And what is the base, I make you theoretically take it as, what is, are we keeping starting pay at forty or reduce, reducing it to thirty-six five? That would be maybe the first question that you need to decide in your mind. And then what is that pay between the ranks? Do I have any motions?
Let me, let me ask, Bork. The reduction of pol-, of, of population in Abbeville, we are less than twelve thousand now, correct?
Based on the twenty-twenty census, that's correct.
Okay.
Then COVID.
And you, you do agree that this council should choose one of these to move forward with the salary?
I do.
Okay.
There is nothing in place right now.
Yeah.
There's nothing in place on how to pay, uh, officers within the department, so it's the council's duty to.
We're gonna do our duty, council, I move for the starting pay of forty thousand and ten thou-, and ten percent increase in ranks.
I see. Okay, I have a motion and a second on the table. We'll allow comments again, if you have something you to say. No, okay.
I do.
Yes, go ahead. Stand and state your name for the record, please.
I'm Angela Lamoyne, I'm a dispatcher at FOP. In July of this year, I was up for a ten percent raise, I was there for four years. I still wanna know what's happening with that, because I don't fall into the ranks with the officers. I was there for four years, I fulfilled my obligation of being there for four years. And then whenever it came time for my ten percent raise, it was denied by you.
Yeah, and the reason for that, Ms. Lamoyne, is because what was your starting pay when you, when you started at the department?
I honestly couldn't tell you right now.
And the third, and the nineteen thousand and five hundred dollars in raises are thirteen thousand, four hundred in twenty-twenty-two, was well above the ten percent that was owed to you, correct?
Well, yes, it was.
And so you got that ten percent early.
But we all got the same amount.
Yeah.
So, but chief. So nobody else is getting raises?
So with this paper attached to it was, was, um, longevity pay, starting pay, and longevity pay for receptions, admins, and admin to chief. Um, that's behind it. And so, um, it is not my recommendation, so the chief, there was an, not the chief, I'm not gonna say the chief, because it was before this chief, right? It's somewhere in the past. There was an internal thing where they were promising five percent to dispatchers and admin staff, right? After, tell me what it was, chief, in your.
How much, fifteen percent?
After how many years?
Uh, now you got me.
Yeah. So I think it was five, eight, and.
One, four, four and eight.
So actually, that's not even, that's not even legal, or, like, we can't, I can't even give someone that's been there eight years an automatic pay increase. That's, that's against the law in municipal.
So I was handed a paper whenever I got hired there.
That was never adopted by this council.
Okay, but I was handed that paper whenever I was hired by the chief that hired me.
Yeah.
And it said that I would have a ten percent raise if I stayed there for four years. I did. I have put up with everything, I've put up with the insults from city council calling on the phone, cause, you know, you made a comment a while ago that, you know, we are very disrespectful. Y'all don't know how many times I have been disrespected as a dispatcher from city council members, which is very shameful. Very shameful, that I would have to actually deal with that for my city council members. So I just want to get that on.
Well, ma'am, if you're throwing that at me and talking about me, Terry Bruce, or let me set the record straight. Every time that I've called the Abbeville Police Department, it has been because a constituent has contacted me to tell me about shooting. They called again ten minutes later to ask where the Abbeville Police Department is. That is why. And when I call, I'm so frightened, there's no time to really be rude to anybody because I'm anticipating and waiting for the police department to get where they're supposed to be.
Well, ma'am, when there's only three of us for a whole city, then how do you expect us to answer calls back to back to back to back? You have to wait.
I can honestly say as a dispatcher, when these officers are en route, they're en route. If they're not en route to your call, it's because they are en route across the city somewheres to a call that's just as important or life-threatening as the call that you're calling about.
And let's be very honest, if you go back for the last six years and check the APD call log, I may have called four times because I've. I may have called four times because I've learned to immediately, immediately go straight to the chief of police. He's right there. And if you wanna contact the former chief of.
I hate to say this, but that's a false statement because I know you've called more than four times.
Way more.
Ms. Lamoyne. I'm gonna state something. In twenty twenty, your annual salary.
So guess my biggest.
Twenty two thousand, one hundred, and you made sixty four hundred in overtime, which came to twenty eight, six oh, six fifty. With the two raises that were that that, well, you might have been hard in, let me see. You were hard in twenty twenty, so you probably came in after the first raise was implemented. And when we gave the second raise, your pay went to forty two thousand, four eleven, which is an increase of twenty thousand dollars plus twelve thousand, three hundred and twelve in overtime. So the the total for total gross was fifty four thousand, seven twenty four, thirteen. So that is why I did not approve an additional ten percent. And I have no intention of approving anything.
So let me ask you this, was that, whenever y'all put that into place, were we told then that we would not be getting our ten percent raises after four years?
I have no idea what the chief told y'all. I'm not even.
So was that told, were you the one that she said you could then deny it? So were you, did you tell us at that time we would not no further get our ten percent?
I didn't even know that that was an internal policy that the chief had because it had never been brought to me or council. It wasn't even considered when we gave raises because we didn't even know the chief had that in his hiring packet.
So it wasn't. For the record, it was in the hiring packet that that was an agreement. But you're denying it, saying that I don't deserve the ten percent because we got the raises. But I found out after that paycheck that I got, I found out after that paycheck was cut that I would not get be getting my ten percent raise. I should have been told that long before that, that the that raise was not there. So if you're gonna deny it now, you should have denied it way back when, whenever everything was being put into place, but you did not.
I made it very.
I was I was actually depending on that raise.
Well, you you got way more than that raise when you got the thirteen thousand, four hundred.
That's that's whenever everybody got that raise. I'm just saying, I don't like the way it's being done. It's kinda like coming from the dark. Oh, watch this, boom, we're not gonna give her that. Oh, watch this, we're not gonna give those officers that. It's like everything is being done in the dark, and that's not cool. That's not good at all.
I appreciate your comments, Ms. Lamoyne.
Uh, the document that you were handed that said you would get a ten percent period, where'd that come from? Chief Hardy or prior?
Prior chief. Bill Spearman. So I've been waiting for that ten percent for four years. I and I do appreciate the the raise. I do appreciate that. But no one said I was not gonna get my ten percent whenever it came time for it. Because I know there was a two percent that wasn't given, and there was also a fifteen percent that was not, or a ten, no, fifteen percent that was not given all at the same time and stuff. None of us was aware that we was not gonna get that. None of us. And I think that's where a lot of this disgruntledness becomes, really. Y'all talking about officers, like us not having officers and stuff, like, uh, we had the same amount as before. Because people got excited, we started recruiting officers, but then whenever all this mess started coming that the city council wasn't gonna do this, the city council's blocking this, the city council's blocking that. People got discouraged. I'm a dispatcher, I listen for a living. People got discouraged and they started going to, they said, we ain't dealing with this. The city is, no, we're not, we're gonna go to another city that they got their their stuff together. And that's what they started doing. They started leaving our department all over again because of all the disgruntledness that the officers had regarding what the city was deciding to do with our pay raises. I mean, I'm I'll be honest with you. I could go to the next department and dispatch. Because, y'all, y'all just gonna hire somebody else, right? Y'all just gonna hire somebody else. But you know what? You're gonna take an experienced dispatcher for somebody that may make it in dispatching, in dispatching, or may not make it in dispatching. And it's like, y'all don't really care. Like, y'all, you need to keep the offices that y'all have, they seasoned. And just because he hasn't been here for fifteen years, guess what? He's stepping into the same job he was called to do for fifteen years. He might be at five years, but he's doing the same job as a fifteen year vet in the police department. Same title, same same thing.
With less officers.
With a lot less officers that have a lot less experience. If y'all really wanna know the danger in that.
Come ride with them.
Yeah, go ride with them. They have new officers because that's all we can get right now. We can't get experienced officers in here putting up with all this bull. So we're getting new officers, new blood, and they're coming into the.
It's on the level of the shootings we deal with.
Exactly. So these, he might be there for five years and he might be a sergeant. But let me tell you something, he's he's pulling the same workload as a fifteen year old sergeant. That's all I got to say.
Anybody else for the record? Okay. So I have a motion and a second on the tape. We're gonna do a roll call vote. Councilman Hardy, you're gonna need to recuse yourself on the record. Why don't you go ahead and state that? Okay. Um, and the reason for that is because he has a brother who is a lieutenant in the department, so he cannot vote, he can participate in discussion, but cannot. Councilman Cannon.
I'll go with the Councilman Bruce already.
Councilwoman Bruce, forty thousand with ten percent increase, yes, okay. Councilman. Councilwoman. And Councilman Hardy, for the record, recuse himself. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. If any of y'all wanna leave, you can now. If you wanna stay, you can also. All right, item number three, to approve change order number one relative to the Graceland Avenue sidewalk, I'm sorry. Number two, to ratify the purchase of a used twenty twenty two Chevrolet Silverado from Mike Calvert Toyota of Houston, Texas, in the amount of thirty two thousand, five hundred for the Abbeville Police Department. This vehicle replaces another vehicle that was involved in an accident and the city received insurance proceeds in nearly the same dollar amount at the fault of the driver, not our driver, right, Chief? All right, a motion and a second, Chief.
Just wanted to pass on to the council, uh, we had a twenty twenty that was totaled by the, that hit one of our police trucks head on. Uh, we we received twenty thirty two thousand, seven hundred dollars, and we purchased a two-year newer vehicle with half the miles or a little bit less, man, so you did good.
I know from experience, you have a very good contact in Houston.
This is a new one, but yes.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number three, to approve change order number one relative to the Graceland Avenue sidewalk project. The change order increases the price of contracts by thirty five thousand, two ten forty four for repairs to storm drain piping and the layout of the sidewalk near North Miles. I see Todd in the audience. Todd, are you gonna speak on this?
Yes, uh, that, those are the two items. It's roughly half and half. There were several repairs, I think twelve repairs of the storm drainage pipe that were discovered when we did a video inspection of the pipe. So this is to make repairs to the pipe. Also, the the walk was relocated from the north side to the south side of, uh, Graceland near Mile Street, just to avoid conflicts in the yard on the north side.
Okay, a motion and a second. Okay, a motion and a second. Any questions or comments?
Expansion of our city. So a nineteen seventy plant will become a twenty twenty five, a twenty twenty six plant, and, uh, the bells and whistle, Todd, that'll be, that'll be appreciated to Marie and her team. And, uh, let's just say the outstanding job they do now, they can do more of it in the new plant.
Absolutely.
It can come fast enough.
Your resiliency and your ability to, uh, contain a loose wall.
Is the blank gonna be in the present place? It's just gonna be there in the same place?
Slide expansion, mostly renovations.
Wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
It's gonna expand if we need to do all extra equipment and stuff.
No, it's not going to, it's gonna take up a little larger footprint than current because we're adding some redundancy in so that when we have issues, there's some redundancy, there's gonna be some redundancy built in so that, um, we have backups to some of the systems. But for the most part, you won't see a whole lot of change on the outside, with maybe some additional piping and tank, a little building in the front. Most of the work is going internally to mechanics, to the mechanical ports and the electronics and the filter, the the filter media we're taking out and exchanging that, that should have long been done and hadn't been done. So that's gonna lead to better water quality. Um, and ultimately, the goal will be for it to be a much more efficient, better quality, more reliable water source for the public, and it can't come standard because we have breakdowns every weekend.
Mayor, uh, while we're on topic, Marie.
Yes, sir.
Can you enlighten us? Are we still in the ninety percent tile of quality, ninety three percent tile of quality water?
Yes, sir. We, um, we have had several breakdowns in the past month. That's every month. Everything's old. We managed to work around it. We managed to patch it.
Um, and and what you just said, the quality of our water has not sacrificed.
No, sir.
And the premium water that you and your crew produce for our citizens and our businesses are deeply appreciated.
Thank you. Thank you. With these renovations, we hope to lower the hardness level of the water and to improve the turbidity, which, I mean, I think it's it's really good now, but we hope to be better.
And Todd, you got forty five days on the bid?
We're gonna advertise for my forty five days.
Forty five days, so we'll get those prices and, uh, do you feel it's still gonna be near that estimate, eight point five?
I'm afraid it might be a little bit higher.
Well, with inflation, everything is going up and, uh, if we delay it, it would be more.
Absolutely.
So let's get that done, and thank you for your team.
Yeah, the first advertisement will be, uh, the middle of this month.
Great.
Thanks. I have a motion, Mr. I do. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That is it for items of new business, old business, there is none, engineers, Todd or Kim? You have a question for Todd or Kim?
When do you think we can get the project finished? Though we have a punch list of about nineteen items.
Uh, downtown street.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think they're waiting on the handrails for the, uh, handicap accessible ramps to the courthouse. And they're also, uh, waiting to come in and start the punch list. We generated a punch list. I think there were a few items added. Uh, we're planning to send it to the contractor this week, and I think you're gonna be back in a short, and just start working on.
That's great news.
There are two things that I didn't have time to go back and read both punch lists to see if they were listed. One, I know I didn't see it in Chris's, I don't know if it was in yours, Todd, the pooling of water on the sidewalk by Nehemiah. I know Chris caught a lot of the pooling of water, but I don't know if he caught that one. And I don't know if you had it in yours.
It's all it's all just, because I think it's.
Okay.
Shaving shaving the sidewalk with the drain all.
Just two of those locations.
And the other thing is, I'm not sure if it was on there or not, dusting the metal grates so that they're not so slippery when it rains on the trench drains, was that on one of the two punch lists? That we need to add grit to the the diamond plated, um, trench drains because it's it's too slippery when it's wet. So if those are not on those, those are the two that I had, and I don't recall seeing on those punch lists. That's all, and I know that there's a lot of signage, right? Unfortunately, I didn't have time to go over all that before this meeting, so.
And if I like, we're gonna deliver their signs. Handrails for the steps on Concord. A lot of elderly are served by those attorneys, and if the contractor can be here next week, that would be fantastic. Thank you so much.
Those have handrails for the center of Concord courthouse and also all by blacks.
That's good.
And just, this maybe not is not gonna happen in this particular job, but Bank of Abbeville did talk about potentially adding, he said it sometime he had handrails on his sidewalk, now he does it. Whether or not we could put some because of access, so we'll look at that outside of this job. I just wanted to state it while I was thinking about it to you guys. Okay? Anything else for Todd?
Todd, we wanna bring it to completion, and we wanna pay them. Uh, Kelly Rogers was a great, great superintendent of that, and, uh, we just wanna get them finished and give Glenn that money to move on.
Collect as well. I did pass along and complimented to the contractor for the project.
Thank you so much.
Right. Anything else for Todd or Kim? Hearing nothing, attorney, he's Abbeville. Yeah, that's true. His daughter's a game god. Public Works Director, Chris.
I'll take questions by the order of vice president. Any anything? Started on your signs today. Yours are ready to be picked up. Uh, yours is almost ready to be picked up.
Good, and, uh, Mark Cretsching.
He's gonna, he called today. He's gonna check with him about the the tree foot.
Before the weekend's out, I'd like to be with you on my last break. My last break between eleven thirty and twelve.
Parks and Recreation, Byron.
I'll make it quick, too. This weekend, toys for Todd, so, uh, Como Park is gonna be set up. Well, before the sun even comes up, I'll be there six o'clock Saturday morning, six o'clock Sunday morning. Um, last game will start at eight P M on Saturday night, so you're gonna see the light going. We're gonna be there for a while. Thirty four teams, uh, will be in town. Um, I myself have went to a couple restaurants in town and kinda warned them beforehand, and as of course, business, keep some into town. Other than that, if y'all can come take a ride, come see what it's about, um, once I collect some of the toys, I can shoot out a text or give y'all phone calls, come take some pictures along with the toys at the.
We bring the toys at the, I wanna donate.
Yes, ma'am.
I will have security for you this weekend.
Any for Byron?
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Karen. Uh, Mayor. Um, I'm gonna say this, uh, you know, I'm just gonna say, because I think it's important to say. Yes, I know, um, it's unfortunate that we tried to give a raise and it caused so much distance between city council and department, right? I myself have called multiple times and get no response, right? No response, intentionally, with no other calls happening. So that's a problem. And what this raise was supposed to do was to allow our officers to get a more competitive salary and at the same time build some teamwork between the city and the department. And unfortunately, it has gone the complete opposite way. Um, sure, I would have loved to have known all the internal hiring policies and had the time to flesh it out before we gave the raise. But we had a very impatient council person at the time who demanded the raise, and we gave more than the chief asked, and it has bit this council, it has bit me, and it has bit the public, right? Because now we have, instead of people being appreciative of a raise, feeling they were entitled to more, right? And it's unfortunate that that's the case. No one in government gets paid enough. No one. Now, that's that's a fact. Uh, but we have a very good healthcare plan. We have the state mandated retirement that's on top of that. And so for every dollar we pay out, there's another, I guess it's probably about fifty cents that we have to pay out in retirement and healthcare costs. So all that has to be taken into consideration. And every department in the city wants a raise or wants the raise that APD got. But the reason we gave it to APD and no one else is because you guys do have a harder job and you do put your lives at risk. And if I had money, no option, and a growing population and a growing businesses, we would be having a whole other conversation. But until we get to that point, we've given all we can give right now. We have to wait and see what happens with the economy. That being said, public safety is a huge part of economic development. People don't wanna live in a community where it's not safe. So when I call about an issue, or the public calls about an an issue, and no, and don't get the proper response, or we don't see enforcement.
or we don't see enforcement of laws, that's part of what's making people pick up and leave Abbeville. And every person that leaves Abbeville is one less dollar that can go into salaries and raises and projects. So we all have to work together. No matter if you believe I'm doing the wrong thing or the council's doing the wrong thing, we all have roles in this government. Every one of us took an oath to do a job or a pay that was set at the time we took the oath, right? I declined a raise when it was offered to me from this council because I took an oath to do my job for seventy-five thousand dollars. The chief got a twenty thousand dollar raise that was on him to accept, right? But I took an oath to do it for seventy-five and I do my job every day for that amount of money. And I stay here till midnight and I work weekends and I try to come up with solutions to make everybody happy and that's the fairest to all employees and nobody's ever happy, it's never enough, right? So I'm gonna say this, I value every member of my team. But if you don't think that we're doing right by you, there's a door, right? I'm sorry, but that's it. We have worked hard to give good raises to the department. We gave more than was asked for for starting pay and it has boomeranged and caused a mess in this city that I am ashamed of. I am ashamed of the attitudes with it, I'm ashamed of the fact that it's my, it's my job to set the budget and set it reasonable, right? I don't set pay, the chief doesn't set pay, this council does. The chief and I have tried for a year to come up with a compromise and there's no compromise, right? So this is what has to be done to move forward because I'm tired of looking back and I'm tired of paying for other people's sins, right? My job is to move this city forward and I'm gonna do it with everything I have and if you're not on board with that, there's a door. Retirement is right waiting for everybody, right? I don't wanna lose, lose one team member, but I am tired of hearing about past injustices. We are trying to right those injustices and it's never enough. So I wanna say that on the record because I think it's important. Um, that being said, I really have no other energy other than, had a beautiful symphony last night, I enjoyed it. I'm looking forward to the, the Christmas holidays and I hope twenty twenty-five can be a better year for us than twenty twenty-four was, right? And that's all I'm gonna say about that. Um, Police Chief, Chief Mike Hardy, you have the floor.
Yes, just gonna be one minute. First of all, I want to thank y'all for starting, the starting pay at forty thousand at, in year twenty-two. If y'all wouldn't have started the new pay at forty thousand dollars, we probably still wouldn't have had any new officers. Uh, by setting the starting pay at forty thousand, we went from no recruits to we've hired twenty-five people. We've lost some, but we've hired twenty-five people since that time. Uh, I have an apartment that's only three short right now compared to fifteen short when I took over. So we've come a long way, we have some good officers, you understand? You inherited a lot of officers there, but the new ones that are there, we have quality officers and they're gonna do fine. Some of these people have time and, and they, they, they have a lot of time and a lot of frustrations comes with a lot of time, but.
And, and there were some officers in this room that every time I called them, I get respect and help and I appreciate that. And there are some that we don't, right?
And, and, and the last thing I want to say about that, if you have any problems with the police department, I am always trying to improve it. If you have a question for anybody and they're not answering you, call me. There's not anybody in this room that hasn't been offered one of my cards. I have cards that I hand out to everybody. I did, I didn't even get Miss Rachel already. So, uh,
Yeah.
If you wanna call me, my number is three three seven three one six two eight five five. And if you don't know it, call me again and I'll give it to you again.
I have it on speed dial. Anything else for Chief, for Chief?
Questions, I'm open.
I, I just wanna say that the attitude that was displayed in here by one of your officers was should be tolerated. Citizen sit down in the audience, watching it was total disrespect and disheartening. Because I know if I was to call and that officer to, to come to my house with that attitude and attitude that I have, it would be a disaster.
But you know my number too.
Yes, I just, but I'm just.
Yes, ma'am, understand, yes, ma'am.
So if maybe you could talk to him, I would hope that you would.
Anything else for Chief Hardy?
Chief, I would just say, I, I enjoyed my conversations with you. That thirteen thousand dollar raise was historical for the city of Abbeville. And you agreed and I agreed that we thought that was the solution to bring new officers in the city.
We did recruit a lot from that, from that starting pay. And, and I'll, I thought it was gonna be a little trouble because of the law, but I didn't realize it would be this much trouble.
And we'll, we'll all be better with resolving the lawsuit.
Okay, anything else for Chief Hardy?
I would like to make comments.
Yes.
Sergeant. Um, I don't wanna, I do wanna say chime in with the, we are thankful for that raise and it was so much needed. Um, it put food on the table for my family and if it wasn't for that, with the price of living going up with homeownerships go going up for everybody, I would not be able to make ends meet right if it wasn't for it. So I'm gonna double up on that, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you for that comment. And we have employees, and we have employees in the city who can't put food on the table because we have to keep that ping historically low because of the extra costs, so, you know. Thank you for your comment, we appreciate that.
Thanks for that.
Okay, anything else for Chief Hardy? All right, hearing nothing, Chief Mayor.
I just wanna thank Miss Kristen for helping me recruit you.
Got some applications?
No, ma'am. But she worked hard on it. People are calling, but they just haven't come get it.
They can apply online too, right? Can they apply online, yeah. Okay, anything for Chief Mayor?
Chief, I, I have contacted Nehemiah Project of Acadiana to find local candidates who can fill those spots.
Appreciate it.
So I think the, you know, the further we look, I think you're gonna get them. And it's always, it's always good when we can find Abbevillians.
Yes, I agree.
Chief, both Chief Miras and, and, uh, Abel, like there. Uh, for the, for, for, um, the stroll.
Yes, ma'am.
There will be a train, let's still say it right. There will be a train going around the city to drop people off and pick them up, uh, at, at the different stops on the outer skirts and they're gonna pass right by the fire department. So if the department would like to do something special for the train, like put the lights on on the trucks or whatever, like.
I have already did that.
Okay. That's good, she told me that, but I wanted to say, we welcome y'all to, uh,
We will, we will do so.
Yeah, there's a chance of rain Thursday, we hope everybody pray that there's no rain. So that's a, that's a late addition to it and, uh, it's a, a local person that, it's a local person who built the train and is going to, wanted to show the lights of the city and bring people around on a ride. So we have picked a route where we know there's gonna be lights and also stop at the outer limits of the stroll. So if you have trouble walking, you'll be able to ride to the most distant points and walk inside. And there will be police escorts with that, the, the marshal's office is gonna help with the escorts of the train.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure. I, I don't know anything about it, so I'd like to know where they went.
So.
I'm gonna bring you, uh, we finished the map today.
Okay.
The marshal's got the front of the train and the back of the train.
Good.
That way you don't have to stop the tri- traffic, then you can ride with the traffic on the, on some of the roads that aren't gonna be closed. But that way traffic can continue to flow.
Just to know where it's at though, that's how long.
Chief, he has it today, today he ha, he, he finished it up, um.
If it rains early, train will be here, but if it rains, it's five or five-thirty.
No.
They won't take the train.
The rain should be over in the morning, it's gonna be a primary Wednesday event, Wednesday night event.
And there will be train rides, right now it's scheduled also for the Cajun Christmas celebration to come in and give some rides. But that's in the daytime he would ride, so people wanting to ride the train and see the lights at night need to come for the stroll. And then, and it's gonna be for free, it's a, a good, we're very excited to have it.
Is it only for the train to keep going or are they making stops like four?
We have four stops, we put four stops, uh, so it's, it's going to take off right here on Concord Street. So they'll line up on Concord with the nose at City Hall, will load there, that'll be the first loading and unloading. They'll go around the courthouse, they'll go down North St. Charles because there's a lot of houses on the block that I live on from Vermillion to Edwards, um, with lights. They're gonna stop at, they're gonna go all the way around, turn on Edwards, they're gonna come down like the Christmas parade does, go on Washington by the fire station, so they can stop on the corner.
And ride on Vermillion.
And stop on the corner. So people that wanna get down and do Episcopal church, a Methodist church, and if the Caldwell's on the punch list, I'm not sure if it is. And the Baptist church, that's all on that one stretch of road. So it'll stop on the west corner, Vermillion and, and North St. Charles, uh, North State. People can get out and do those, people can get on, it'll continue on, it's gonna go down Main. It's going to stop at Duke, by Duke Weeds, by Steen's. By Steen's, that people on and off.
The north side by the Catholic Church.
Yeah, by Saint Mary Magdalene, yeah. On, on, and it's gonna stop there and let people on and off. And then it'll continue on to Chloe Rose, which is the farthest to the south at the corner of this out stamping point. Stop there for people to get on and off and then come back up railroad to Jefferson and go, he really wanted to drive down Concord with the lights on top. So we figured out how to make that happen. So Chief and Chris will get together tomorrow so your department knows what's going on too. And, uh, and we bring, he, we didn't think he was doing it for the stroll, we thought he was only doing it for the Cajun Christmas. Then he called me on Friday or I don't remember when, he wanted to do it and I was out of town, so I had Chris work on it. So that's what was decided the last couple of days. Okay, so just wanted to put that out there. Um, anything else for Fire Chief? Hearing nothing, topics for councils discussion, I'm gonna change it up and I'm gonna go with Councilman Hardy on the end first. Okay?
Um, the only thing I have is to, uh, hope to see everybody on the Christmas stroll and to have a safe and joyful holiday season.
Councilman Bruce Harvey.
Mark your calendars, this Thursday is the Christmas stroll. Uh, if you wanna talk more about the train, we can start that again. But you will have many of our businesses open with discounts of items. Please support our local businesses participating in the stroll. We'll even have Kristen smile in the stroll. And I wanna point out, uh, Rotarian Kristen, Rotarian Kim. The Rotary Club will be giving hundreds of free toys to children on the fourteenth, the Abbeville Cajun Christmas Parade. Fifty vendors, the Babino Sisters playing music, Gino Delafosse playing music. It's gonna be a great day for everyone who lives in Abbeville. I hope I see all of you there, it's gonna be a wonderful December. Thank you.
I do wanna say thank you to J A. for decorating the square. There's additional lights in the square this year, that's because Junior Auxiliary took it upon themselves to do the decorations. We're happy to have their help, I know the electrical department is happy to have them do it instead of them. Um, and so, uh, also thank you to the electrical department for all the work they've been doing, getting the city ready. I know it's their least favorite time of the year, but it is my favorite time of the year. And what they do makes our town so special. Also, thank you to the city team today for helping me put together sprays last minute so we can get them on the lamppost, that's all going up. So I can't wait to see everything, our city with all her, all her jewelry on, um, this coming week and, and for the holiday season. I already have a lot of people texting pictures and saying, thank you for our Hallmark City. Now let's hope Hallmark sees it, does do a film here and helps all of us by bringing in tax dollars. That would be the end goal. So, um, I, I did wanna say that, you know, I'm neglected to say it for mine, so I just wanted to put that on record. Councilwoman Bruce Harvey, I'm out of words tonight, okay? Councilwoman Campbell.
Uh, in regards to the office, who said something about putting food on the table?
Yes, sir.
The food drive is December tenth. Super One, so if anybody's got any extra money or any extra canned goods, please remember the food drive.
I did, Sean.
I'm gonna go through the events real quick, just, I'm sorry. Uh, December fifth is stroll and we, at five-thirty, we're gonna light the Christmas tree in the square. So we got a new Christmas tree donated by someone and we'll do official lighting ceremony at five-thirty, please join us. Uh, the stroll is five-thirty to eight P M. this Thursday. We train rides from five-thirty to seven forty-five and a drawing for gift baskets at eight fifteen. And we have twenty-eight, twenty-eight participants this year, so that's great, it's a good thing. Super One Food, Food for Families Food Drive, Tuesday, December tenth, um, eight P M., eight A M. to six P M. So please donate food at Super One, they usually have grab acts that make it pretty easy. Oh gosh, I'm so sorry. City of Abbeville Book Drive, collecting new children's books through twelve twelve to get kindergarten classes here in Abbeville. So if you'd like to donate new books for the kindergarten classes, please drop it off here at City Hall. Coffee Talk with Mayor White, Chief Hardy and Chief Mayor and the departments at City Hall Council Room on December twelfth, seven A M. to eight-thirty, please join us. The Cajun Christmas Event, December fourteenth, one to eight P M. With Rotary's Classic Car Show, Vineyard Market Food Village and Kids Crafting Corner, two to five, Free Picks with Santa. You already know all that, we just uncovered it. And in the Holiday in the Square by Junior Auxiliary, five-thirty P M. on December twentieth, from five-thirty to eight-thirty. Free family fun event in Magdalen Square includes space painting, ornament making, games, hot chocolates, cookies, sweets and more. So we are happy to have all this for families to do in Abbeville in December, please join us, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.